Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are recording.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good evening, everyone. We will now call the committee of the whole meeting of March 11th, 2021 to order. Next item, I'm looking for any late additions or deletions for the agenda.
No late additions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Someone please move that the March 11th, 2021 committee of the whole agenda be adopted? Counselor Weeb, second Counselor Leach, call the question those in favor. Carrie. Item 3.1, somebody to move that the January 18th, 2021 committee of the whole meetings be adopted as presented, and that the February 16th, 2021 committee of the whole meeting minutes be adopted as presented. Who will so move? Counselor Weeb, second Counselor Howe. Any discussions, any errors or omissions? They're seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. There are no business arising from the minutes. We'll move on to 5.1. 2021 project planning and service level increase requests for the 2021 to 2025 financial plan. So, Ms. LaRue, will you be presenting?
I'll actually start the intro and then I'll hand it over to LaRue.
Thank you, Mr. Denegar.
Okay, so in a moment, a slide should appear for everyone on the screen. Give it a second. Trying a new way of doing slides now. So it should say 2021-2025 financial plan on your screen there. If anyone's not seeing that, please let me know. Okay, so the purpose for tonight is for staff to present to council the project and service level increases requested for 2021. So for clarity, projects is the term that we use for one-time initiatives typically. Could be developments or purchases, and although they may be one-time, they may span a number of years. Now, service level increases are requests that typically have an ongoing operational cost that will then be included in future budgets. These ongoing costs are typically funded through taxation or user fees. So as this is a committee of the whole meeting, we're not looking for any resolutions or decisions. As always, if there are requests, if you are completely not into something, please let us know and then we can work from that direction to update the plan before we bring it to the next meeting. So moving forward, depending on how tonight goes, we're anticipating another meeting next week for you to provide more of that direction and to then bring forward those recommendations and directions for adoption of a financial plan as a bylaw. So it's our hope that we can bring this bylaw to the April 6th meeting for consideration and perhaps even adoption. Now, many of the projects up for discussion do require engineering or contracting, and as in previous years, the later the project goes out to tender, the less likely it is that we'll receive competitive or any bids. So time does matter. Okay, so this is the agenda for today. Starting with my introduction right now. And then we'll go through presentations from each of our department heads, giving highlights of what was achieved last year, as well as some of the challenges, both last year, ongoing and upcoming, and any issues that they're seeing. And then they'll highlight the projects and service requests that they're bringing to you tonight. After all the presentations are done, our CFO will then provide an overview of the projects and their funding sources, the status of reserves, and so forth, and the next steps. And if there's any questions or concerns at any time during any of these presentations, feel free to turn off your mic and interrupt us. We can see little tiny thumbnails of you, but we won't necessarily see if you're squinting and concerned. So, interrupt is need be. So, just as a reminder, council has adopted the core status quo operating budget. So this is to keep things continuing as they have been in previous years. That was adopted at the February 16th meeting. You may have felt like it flew by, and that could be because under the current regulations with COVID, financial bylaws can be introduced, read, and adopted all in one meeting, which is a bit faster than we're used to. Today, we're specifically talking about projects and service levels, though. The things above and beyond the status quo. So one-time projects are funded through grants, donations, reserves, and accumulated or appropriated surpluses. They do not affect the 2021 tax rates as presented by staff. So please do not dwell too much on the costs. I know that sounds weird, since we're talking budget, but the idea is that staff have accounted for this and we're keeping the reserves and so forth at healthy levels. You're certainly welcome to ask about them, but we ask that instead the council consider the community value of these projects and whether they align with your goals. So as a reminder of the municipal goals that we recently came to, a safe and healthy community, that will be attractive to economic growth, with diverse and attainable housing. We want to be a community that's a trusted partner of our indigenous communities and to have a well-managed, sustainable infrastructure. You'll see a lot about that in some of these projects. So some projects, as I mentioned earlier, have ongoing operating costs. These costs are typically funded through taxation or user fees. Now, these projects that have these ongoing costs typically relate to increasing the levels of service that are provided to the district, provided by the district to the community. So some improve our internal processes and capabilities, whether they be through technology or just modernization or extra features or abilities. And those things, the public may not see, but they help us as staff provide more help to the public. And then there's other projects improving things, the assets and services that people actually see on the street, whether it be a park or a sidewalk or a water service. Now, the proposed service level increases, as proposed by staff, will not affect the 2021 tax rates. Our brilliant CFO has found other ways to do these, but of course, it is up to council whether or not you want to take that approach or just increase taxes, and LaRue will talk about that later. Now, they will likely affect the 2022 tax rates or fees and charges because they're ongoing costs, these service level increases. And remember that the purpose of service level increase is to provide better services to residents and businesses. It's not just for the fun of it. So every department gets to do a little overview, and I thought I wanted one too. I was getting jealous of all the really great slide presentations. So just a reminder that your CFO is responsible for the overall management and the operations of the municipality, or responsible for ensuring that the policies, programs, and directions that you provide are implemented, and to advise and inform you on the operations and affairs of the municipality. I direct and support senior staff, including our chief financial officer, corporate officer and planner, director of protective services and fire chief, director of public works and utilities, and the manager of recreation. I also oversee and work with staff and contractors on the block watch program, economic development, human resources, information technology, legal matters, risk management, liability exposure, and probably some other things. Also work with you as council and mayor on community and stakeholder engagement, economic development, inter-community relations, intergovernmental relations, and strategic planning. But I only have one request this year in the budget. And that is IT software. You'll see that on page 34 of the package, which I hope you have. And short version of that whole page is that having modern subscription-based software, firewalls, and antivirus actually reduces our costs for IT support overhead, improves staff efficiency, and reduces our risk exposure to modern hacking attacks. So that's all I'm asking for, and now I'm going to leave it to our CFO to continue. Any questions before I leave? I've seen shaking heads, so I'm going to stop presenting and hand it over to LaRue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denegar. I really thought it was funny how you called yourself the CFO, and now I'm in charge of all that stuff. Uh, okay, going to start here. And everybody will notice a little bit of lag time while the next person starts their slideshow. It takes a little time to upload and get it viewable for you. Hopefully, you can all see the finance department bright on your screen there. Everybody knows this time of year, it's all about finance. So I was supposed to go first, but Jeremy kind of took over, and that's good. As the finance department, who are we? We have three very dedicated full-time employees, two just as dedicated part-time or relief employees. In our department, we have the district's most long-serving employee, Nate Moyer. She's been with the district since 1996. Adding her to the rest of the employees in the finance department, we make up a cumulative total of almost 60 years of service with the district, and there's only five people within our department. We have our fingers in many pies. There's not much that happens at the district that doesn't involve finances, whether it be directly or indirectly. We're responsible for the short-term and long-term financial planning for the district. We're required to prepare a ton of reports. We make recommendations on tax and utility rates, calculate and collect those billings. As well, our team is responsible for administering the district's group benefits plan. We ensure our employees are paid on time and correctly. We process payment for all of the goods and services that are purchased by the district, and we provide not just financial, but administrative support to all of the other departments within the district. In addition, we work with other department heads and the CAO to oversee human resources for the district. This is, of course, just a few of our duties and responsibilities. It's definitely not exhaustive, but gives you an idea of what we're up to every day. Last year, our team sent out property tax billings totaling about $4.25 million. Utility billings just under $1.5 million. By the end of the year, approximately 96% of these amounts were collected, therefore recorded by the finance department. We made almost 800 payments to employees, firefighters, and council. We processed about $5.4 million in payments to vendors and other external parties, including requisitions from other governments on property taxes. As I mentioned, we do a ton of reporting. As usual, all of the required financial reporting was prepared, sorry, prepared, presented, approved, and submitted well before the deadlines. The required budgets, or sorry, the required bylaws for budget, taxes, and utilities were also prepared and approved well before the deadlines. And I'm proud to say that we've again been awarded the Canadian Award for Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for this year. There's a number of issues that we face each year, and there's a few new issues that I can see upcoming. The pandemic, of course, had a significant effect on all of the operations of the district last year. I don't see that easing up in the near future. Of the five employees I mentioned that we have employed in the finance department, three of them are at or nearing retirement age. There's many upcoming changes to financial reporting requirements, including asset retirement obligations. I have it in there as ARO, and our CAO actually looked that up, which was great. This is a financial reporting requirement that's upcoming for 2023, but has to be prepared for in the upcoming year. It's going to require significant work and data collection, not just for us as the finance department, but surprise, for all of the departments. We have increasing pressures, some just from myself, for earlier budget presentation and preparation. And finally, as part of council's strategic objectives, the finance department will be working in conjunction with all of the other departments to do an annual review of bylaws containing any fees and charges. Matter of fact, our corporate officer is bringing some of these to council at the next meeting, I believe. But I have to say, although some of these issues and challenges seem overwhelming at times, the team that makes up the district's finance department is one of the most hard-working and dedicated teams I know, and we take pride in a job well done regardless of the challenges we face. I don't have any projects or service increase requests to bring to you, so I'm going to end it here and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue. Any questions, comments from council? Counselor Weeb?
Hopefully, this doesn't need to be answered in a closed meeting. Do we have succession planning with our part-time people into if and when someone in the finance department retires?
At this time, through the mayor, we do a lot of cross-training, so our employees are able to cover other positions as need be. Of course, as people, should they retire, as they retire, they need to be replaced. So it's an ongoing effort, but it's certainly not something that we're not looking to in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Well, thank you, Ms. LaRue. Well done. Just, you bring up a point that's become more and more an issue with me that I certainly want to extend out to the communities and to the provincial government as well. I think that the downloading that I see and experience by the province in terms of our requirement for information really chews up a significant amount of time for staff. I've come to realize that more and more, and it irks me to the point because it steals away important time for initiatives that we want to do for our community. So I just want to put that on record, and you can be assured, and I think our CAO is well aware of that, that I'm preaching that point right now. I am not happy with the amount of downloading and information requirement, and now you bring up an ARO that we have to have prepared by 2023, and you tell me, you tell us, council, that it impacts all our... As I said, it's unfortunate that the UBCM is virtual, but I certainly want to bring that to our attention. It really impacts the smaller communities like ourselves and puts extreme pressure in terms of our staffing because we, as a council, have a pretty aggressive strategic plan. How in heaven's name are we going to get it done when our staffing is wrapped up in tight circles just to keep the people in Victoria happy? All right, I've said my piece. Thank you once again, and we'll move on to the next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just loading up the document here. Okay, so corporate services. So corporate services is the department that everyone needs. Nobody notices, and if you ask anyone to explain what it is, they won't be able to answer you. The corporate services department is a support for council and staff to ensure that the business of council proceeds smoothly and that processes and procedures are followed in order to achieve fair and good governance. Still doesn't explain what we do. The corporate officer is a legislated function, and as such, is a required position with certain specific duties. That is not to say that the role of many corporate services departments haven't broadened in scope, but the following are the legal requirements of the department. Ensuring that accurate minutes of the meetings of council and council committees are prepared and that there's minutes bylaws and other records of the business of council and council committees are maintained and kept safe. Ensuring that access is provided to records of the council and council committees as required by law or authorized by council. Administering oaths and taking affirmations, affidavits, and declarations required to be taken under any act relating to municipalities. Certifying copies of bylaws and other documents as required or requested, accepting on behalf of the council municipality notices and documents that are required or permitted to be given to, served, on, filed with, or otherwise provided to council or the municipality, and keeping the corporate seal. Now, for corporate services non-legislative functions, we have herding cats, forcing change, and muting the mayor, and dealing with issues that don't fit into any other department responsibility. Corporate services is the catchall drawer in your kitchen with the elastic bands, foreign coins, birthday candles, and for some reason, a box of raisins from 1996. Nobody knows why you have that drawer, but if you didn't, your other drawers would be messy. So the core function of corporate services is to administer and review bylaws, establish and enforce council and administrative policies, and records management. So 2020 was a year. We got a new corporate officer and a new legislative assistant, who is now the deputy corporate officer as of February. We did do a comprehensive bylaw inventory, where we identified bylaws that needed changing, bylaws that were redundant, and bylaws that had fees and charges, and then that needed to be assessed. We did a, our deputy corporate officer did a comprehensive policy review, which the project has gone through the planning and the initial phase has been completed. In this review, the deputy corporate officer inventoried and reviewed the policies and found the gaps that were present there, met with the policy owners, who are the individual managers to whom the policies apply closest. We developed a new policy template so that everything is consistent. And my favorite, we drafted a policy policy, which is a policy on how we make policies. Finally, we implemented the LGMA records, sorry, finally on this slide, we implemented the LGMA records management system electronically so that when we do get to the point of being able to digitize all of our records, it's a one-to-one swapover from our paper files to our electronic files. More in 2020, the freedom of the municipality was awarded, and I believe we've got that actual ceremony coming up at the end of the month, COVID-safe ceremony. The Lillawick Community Fund for its spring and fall sessions. We've started work on consolidating bylaws, and we changed the council meeting set up in room 201, only to be forced online. Then we were in the gymnasium, where we got new microphones and video equipment, and then we were forced online again. This is the last slide of 2020. We implemented the public portal for access to council meetings, minutes, and the document library. Updated meeting manager software for meetings, agendas, and minutes. That's the software we use to publish and review the agendas. We instituted the iCompass Action Tracker, which allows staff to submit their reports directly into the approval workflow, which saves time. And we worked with Protective Services to review the service levels of bylaw enforcement, and I believe council gave first three readings to the bylaw notice enforcement bylaw at the last council meeting. At the moment, corporate services does have the staff required to meet service requirements, and no additional staff are being requested in the 2021 budget. And I assure you that the iconography here of the corporate officer and the deputy corporate officer is correct. So for 2021 priorities, we've already looked at the SILGA and will continue going forward to look at the UBCM resolutions. We will be continuing a comprehensive policy review. We will continue to review and update bylaws. We will be working with the manager of REC on a facility maintenance policy for the end of this year, looking at putting together a master list of all agreements, leases, and contracts by the end of the year, develop a municipal land purchase and sale policy over the next few years, as well as looking at a memorial lighting program. Corporate services is not asking for any service level increases at this time. We are going to continue to work at the policy level to bring everything up to where we can look at doing some more projects. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions from council? There being none. Thank you kindly. We'll move on to the next.
It's still me. I just have to upload the next set of slides. Apparently, this is a big one.
Okay, counselors, hold your smile as long as you can while we're downloading.
Here we go. It's just finishing loading up here for me. All right, development services. So the development services department provides services to those residents, builders, and developers looking to design, construct, or subdivide land within the district. The core functions of this department are to process applications, work with builders and developers, manage development bylaws, and act as the subdivision approving authority. Where our primary service to individual users is the processing of applications, every member of the development services team administers plans, bylaws, and programs to forward the goal of reaching the community's vision in the official community plan. Unsurprising to anyone, applications and construction values took a bit of a dip in 2020. Development applications remained fairly consistent with 2019, only down by two. Building permits were also down to about 2016 numbers, but this can be attributed to physical distancing, economic uncertainty, and the skyrocketing costs of construction materials, which will be a problem for 2021 as well. There's also reportedly so much construction picking back up after last year that demand for building materials is outpacing supply, which may further increase price and protract construction times. 2019, again, had one very large building permit from BC Hydro, which created a value outlier, which is why we see the 2019 jump on the greenmost line. Here, what we are looking at, the red lines are number of permits issued, and the green line, I'm sorry, the red bars are number of permits issued, and the green line is the value of construction associated with those permits. But if we look at the overall trend, we're still moving in the right direction. You can see here visually the effect that the higher cost of building supplies that's having a construction value is values increasing at a higher rate than permits issued. But we are still moving in the right direction for both value and building permits. Development applications have increased exponentially over the last two years, but that's likely due to the addition of contract planning staff in 2018 and 19, and eventually, a staff planner enforcing development requirements. In spite of COVID requirements, 2020 followed a very typical building permit trend, peaking in early spring and running through early July. I am anticipating a similar curve this year. The twenty twenty-one challenges include staffing for anticipated service delivery capacity. Coming out of twenty twenty, many Canadians have expendable income due to the inability to vacation or partake in group activities. It is anticipated that building starts will increase across the province. At the moment, we only have seventeen hours a week for building inspection services, which includes plan checking, inspection, customer inquiry, meetings, filing and records management and often assisting with bylaw enforcement when it pertains to buildings or structures. I mentioned last year that many regulations are still in need of updates, starting with the official community plan, which was unfortunately delayed for several months. The anticipated completion date is somewhere between May and July and will depend on public engagement during phase three of the project. Now, while this one may be obvious to the point of being cheeky, twenty twenty fallout will likely be resonating for a while. In the case of Development Services, it is a sudden restart on projects at a time when permit and inspection requests are already high for our current service delivery capacity. Development Services has also increased enforcement of B C Building Code as required by the Building Act at plan check stage. While this has led to an increase in complaints over permit wait times, which is currently only at around two weeks, it is far better for the applicants to know of code requirements that may have been missed before the permit is issued rather than after the building is framed. Which leads into departmental stricter adherence to appropriate application requirements. I know that this one is going to get some pushback from builders who may not be used to the level of detail that is required to construct today. Staff have come across many older properties where plans and records provide no context of what is actually on the lot and it's leading to some conflict in the community. As part of our push for better records keeping and accountability, staff will be holding up, holding applicants to provide the quality and level of detail required to ensure that the district is acting in the best interests of the community and ultimately future property owners. At the moment, Development Services is staffed by two part-time employees and one contract approving officer. The service delivery of the department is very limited by the number of hours available. However, with the addition of one full-time position in Corporate Services has allowed me to spend a little more time in Development Services. So this is an ambitious list for the twenty twenty-one priorities. And you will notice some of these projects, like the Development Procedures Bylaw and Building Bylaw, are not on the municipal objectives. In order, unfortunately, to meet some of the municipal objectives, these projects are required. And further, the Building Bylaw was legislatively required to be updated a number of years ago, which never happened. For the twenty twenty-one budget requests, we have a carry forward from the twenty twenty O C P project of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. A requested amount of ninety thousand dollars to publish a request for proposal for a review and rewrite of the district subdivision and development servicing procedures bylaw. Sorry, not procedure bylaw, just subdivision and development servicing bylaw. The zoning bylaw is intended to be reviewed in-house by staff. Our requested project amount is twenty-five thousand dollars in order to pay for the therapy I'll require after this project, but will most likely be spent on legal review and any required graphic design. Touching back on the twenty twenty-one challenges is the limits of service delivery. Staff are requesting that the budgeted amount for the building official be increased by sixty-one thousand. This request reflects the increase in operating costs over what is already budgeted. The budget asks. The budget ask is to cover a thirty-five hour or full-time work week and a change in the building inspector one to building inspector two position. I would like to note that our current inspector is actually level three qualified, which means we have the ability to provide inspection services for large, complex, public occupancy buildings or part-three buildings. Other municipalities in the province are panicking to find level three qualified inspectors, so the district is already ahead of the game here. Finally, the housing need assessment will need a budgeted amount of twenty thousand dollars. However, those costs will be fully recovered from the fifteen thousand dollar UBCM grant and five thousand dollar Northern Development Initiative Trust grants already awarded to the district. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions from council on Development Services? Councillor Weeb?
Yes, again, I'm not sure how to exactly phrase this. And so if I'm in the wrong meeting for it, please let me know. When a contractor comes in from a different city or town, like, let's say I'm reshingling my roof, I have been told that I need to get a building permit to replace something that's already there. And then that's not the case in other municipalities. So let's say Kamloops, if I get a contractor from Kamloops, they tell you, well, that's not the way it is in Kamloops, so you don't need a building permit. So I'm wondering if we could have some kind of an educational piece or something put forward as to how that exactly works. And when that contractor comes in, do they need to get a business license here? Or does their building license there cover here?
So those, I'm going to separate those out first with the building permit thing. This probably isn't the best time to talk about it because this is going to spiral into a whole thing. What would be a good time is when I bring forward the Building Bylaw, which will be coming to a committee of the whole first, where we can hammer out these things. And I can, I can invite the building official to come as well. And if that's okay with you, I think that would be a more appropriate time to speak to that. But I can, in the meantime, speak to the building official, go through the current building bylaw and try and find you an answer to that offline. The other question is the the business license. Yes, anyone coming into the community who's doing work here requires a District of Lillawatt business license. Now, we are looking at working with some of the communities in the region to set up what's called an inter-community business license scheme, where we will all sign on to a project. The business license fee is a little higher, but anyone in the region who has signed on, if you get a business license in that municipality, it will work for any of the other municipalities on that scheme. So we are looking at that. It's taking a little time to set up. And I've worked in communities that have had this before and it certainly streamlines, streamlines things for the, for businesses coming in and around. And I am aware that we have quite a few businesses coming to do work here from Kamloops. So we, we are working on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I just want to remind council that I'm confident that Mr. Taylor and and Mr. Denegar will be putting together very similar to what Summerland has on their website, which is a very detailed analysis or requirement for Development Services that shows even timelines and what every aspect of of Development Services that's required to do any kind of works in our, in our community. So, but again, that takes up administrative time. And I know that's something that you're working on right now. Is that confirmed, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, back on the slide with the projects for this year, two of the ones that I mentioned that weren't on the the municipal objectives but need to get down anyways to meet them were the Building Bylaw and the Development Procedure Bylaw. The Development Procedure Bylaw is basically going to be a list of schedules. That's a checklist for developers who come in and ensuring that staff are processing applications consistently every time.
Yeah, I think that will be a very big item that will assist us going forward. Any other questions from council? Comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the next presentation. Keep your smiles going, councillors.
Hi, everyone. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
That's affirmative.
Excellent. All right. Thank you for listening to me. This is a presentation on the Protective Services. So as you see in the first slide here, we're working towards a brighter future. Nice and young individuals here. So Protective Services, we encompass the fire department, emergency management, what also is covered by emergency support services as well and the bylaw department and animal control. So within the department, the fire department aspect of the the department here, this year we have twenty-five members, so seventeen firefighters, one auxiliary, two captains, one lieutenant, one training officer, a fire chief, one junior and one auxiliary officer. So in twenty nineteen, we did see, for twenty twenty, we did see a little bit of a reduction. So in nineteen, twenty nineteen, there was actually twenty-eight members. We've lost three as junior jobs, people moving away for schooling and such. So the department oversees, obviously, the administration aspects of the community planning, budgetary items, all that operational stuff for the fire department. We also train internally. We work with the Vancouver Island Emergency Response Academy that does oversees our training and does our certification. We're also involved in operations, obviously, so responding to emergencies and fire prevention, which is not only fire education or public, public education to schools in the community, but also entails fire safety inspections. So with that, we work closely with the building department. We work in building inspections or reviewing plans in the beginning stages and bylaw enforcement as well. So we've done a few of those as well this past year. All right. So for twenty twenty, we actually responded to forty-nine emergency calls, which equals about five hundred and one staff hours. This was a dramatic decrease from the previous year. We had eighty-six calls in two thousand and nineteen. And obviously, it was contributed to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So obviously, in the beginning months was nice, but not nice. Everybody was kind of staying at home and our call volume was dramatically decreased significantly. And in speaking to our other agencies, they both all experienced exactly the same. So there wasn't as many ambulance calls and there wasn't as many police calls out there. Yeah, so and our, our responses changed a little bit from, from our normal. So when we look at the numbers, we did actually one structure fire, two motor vehicle accidents. Sorry, motor vehicle fires, two, twelve motor vehicle accidents, one chimney fire, three debris fires, five grass fires, fire safety responses, so that's people calling for our assistance, eight commercial alarms, three residential alarms, four medical assist calls, one false alarm and seven burning complaints. So again, in total, we did about five hundred and one hours. Again, a dramatic increase in our response hours was last year, at twenty nineteen, was seven hundred and seventy-one hours. In our practices and public education inspections, obviously dramatically affected by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, we weren't able to get into these areas and look at inspection-wise. So our inspections actually dropped off onto just the essential inspections that needed to be done. In most cases, they were actually done over the phone as much as we could to talk to people, just to keep, keep the business running and keep people moving forward. In our practices, we actually ended up stopping practices and moving to a Zoom-like environment as yourselves and began to do theory, lots of theory practicing and catching up, which was nice on that end of things. And so, yeah, we actually got back to doing some face-to-face training in the summertime and fall, which was nice. But then we got pushed back into the COVID environment. So the COVID restrictions actually restricted us as well. And understanding because our training is such close-knit and in close proximity, it's really difficult to do some of our, our training aspects and our equipment checking stuff.
Mr. Roykey?
Yes.
Could I interrupt for a second? I'm just checking, is councillor Weeb online? Mr. Taylor, power is off.
I'm back, I'm back, Peter. It came back on.
Okay, good. Thank you, councillor Weeb. Sorry, Mr. Roykey, please continue.
No problem. Thank you. Yeah, so compared to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we, we actually did about five thousand five hundred and seventy-eight hours in this section. So public education and practices. And in twenty twenty, the reduction was actually eight hundred hours of man-hours put into that. The biggest contributing factor to this is we actually didn't have to do summer standby, which is a huge contributor to our hours, just because everybody was home. So we didn't have to have our standby rosters going. And the grass fires and the forest fires were actually minimized quite a bit because of the COVID environment. So, yeah, those were our biggest contributing factors to the minimizing of ours. Projects completed in the fire department side of this, the Protective Services. We completed our three-year project for our fuel modification, which is an excellent contribution and we were able to, that was a three-year project. Relocation of our radio repeater system for the emergency repeater was completed actually this year as of last week. So we're glad to say that it was a good, successful project. And we actually tested it last night and we were able to extend out approximately over four kilometers past our boundaries, which is exactly what we wanted to be able to do. So we'll be able to reach further out communication-wise, keeping our firefighters safe. Completion, we completed the first phase of our sprinkler protection unit, equipment purchase. So as you remember, it was a three-year project that I proposed. It was our first year getting complete and we have a third of our equipment ready to go for our sprinkler protection unit. And the development of the training ground phase one is been completed. Want to move into phase two. And, yeah, so we've moved some of the equipment up to our site, to the airport. And we're looking to hopefully develop further with your guys' approval. So emergency management. Emergency management, as you know, has one emergency program coordinator, one emergency support services director and numerous volunteers and staff that work and train for emergency management. I will note, I forgot to place it in here, we do have actually one contract with the Red Cross, Canadian Red Cross, that supports our emergency support services component. And we have a contract for a level one contract. And what that does is by entering in disagreement, they support our workers, but they also provide us with support in training and the responsibility of that. So that takes some stress off of the coordinator, myself, in coordinating extra training and all that. So it's a bit of a stress relief on that. So, yeah, it's, it's all good. Darn. Did everybody see that? Lost it there. Emergency, what, what do we do at this, in this department? We, we are responsible for preparedness. So that's the administration of the district's plan, emergency plan. We have a responsibility to train staff as well as volunteers in the community. And we have a responsibility to educate on the emergency preparedness and such. We also do emergency response. It's more actually coordination in support of the response. So we don't actually do the response, but we support the response agencies such as fire department or wildfire or interior health authorities, that new one, and the mitigation and prevention of that. So going back in, oh, sorry, recovery as well. So recovery plans and how we're going to recover from certain things, a landslide, wildfire or help out with the, in COVID-nineteen and the pandemic responses in that. So, yeah, mitigation and and prevention is So, yeah, mitigation and and prevention is preparing for, right? So pu- public education, getting the messages out. And newly last year is the implementation of the community alerting system. That would be all part of that. Completed this year or twenty twenty, we were lucky to squeeze in a training session with a ClickIt and the First Nations around us, but just before the pandemic enclosures happened. So that was good that we were able to do that. And we also participated in, at the beginning of the COVID response, in activating our EOC. This was one of the most challenging responses that I'd ever seen. And I can probably say all municipalities across the entire province and Canada, this had to be the most stressful situation that I, that anyone's been in. Because restrictions of not being able to be side by side in every training scenarios that we do, we actually train in a room, face-to-face, walking distance away to be able to to talk to one another, plan. Everything had to be done in a virtual environment. We had to overcome so many adversities here that if we didn't have Jeremy or C A O involved, we probably would have faltered pretty heavily. But having a tech person there has come to light in, I think, so many other communities that we need to have that support in there in order to go virtual. And it was kind of an eye-opener for everybody, I think, but we made it through and it was a good effort by everybody. So, yeah, many, many teachings are going to be coming out of this and figure out how we're going to work into the virtual environment. So that was a really good experience. Wish to do it again, but good for good for more future planning than that, so. So by law enforcement is also part of the protective services. Obviously, in investigation of complaints, district bylaw, education and enforcement, animal control services, the bylaw officer also is in charge of business licensing and administration. And meter reading is in that as well. So I am happy to be able to report on some statistics that we finally gathered out of this section and what you're looking at here. So in twenty twenty, we did approximately one hundred and ninety, thirty-nine complaints were registered with the bylaw officer, and forty-eight of the cases are closed. We do have some litigations going on as we speak. So we're running in more and more into more complex issues that are taking up more time in there. So not too sure that you can see those. I'll just read a few, just to explain a bit. In organizing the department a little bit better now as far as enforcement-wise, what we're going to be doing is replying or looking at three different sections now. So it will be bylaw. So bylaw will take in all other complaints such as garbage signage, waters, business licensing, zoning, noise, nuisance by complaints of that nature, and then into traffic and parking. So that'll be another section in animal control. So those are the three categories from now on that you I'll be reporting on in those fashions and giving you numbers in that. So for twenty twenty, we did, like it said, one hundred and thirty-nine complaints. Just to run through some, two garbage complaints, two sign complaints, forty watering complaints. So that's actually watering outside of hours or or so on. Business licenses are three, four zoning complaints, seven building complaints. Bylaw officer took care of three burning complaints. Under the nuisance is a little bit different because it can be spread out. General nuisances were three, odor nuisances, five, unsightly premise or zoning issues, seven. Noise complaints, five, and over thirty unsightly premise complaints in there. In under the traffic and parking section, we have ten complaints that were lodged. And under the animal control, we have sixteen complaints. And we have one COVID complaint because it took on later in the year. So the bylaw officer was actually enacted to help out with bylaw, our COVID relief, our COVID pandemic stuff around May nineteenth and extended actually to January fifteenth of this year and looked at those things. So in that saying, bylaw officer did approximately about five hundred and twenty-six hours of time into COVID patrols and helping out complaints in that wise. Also, in the bylaw department, we did two hundred and fifty-six business licenses with thirty-nine of those being brand new. So that's not too bad in a COVID environment time. Animal fostering. So these are initiatives that the bylaw officer had kind of looked at. And we were able to foster out twenty-two animals, spay and neutering neutering program that we administer. We were able to do, and this is for low-income families, to help out with the spay programs. And we were able to help out seventeen applicants. And like I said, we did have, we do have two major investigations, things going into litigation now, and we are continuing to this day with those.
Darren, can I just ask you a quick question?
Yep.
Sorry, through the mirror, on the the previous slide, when you, when you say that you have forty-eight cases that are closed, does that mean that forty-eight cases are resolved? And there's still, what, ninety, ninety unresolved? Or? Is that how that, how I read that?
That is correct, yes. So being that our bylaw officer is, has been on medical need now, we're working through those numbers to see exactly what's, what needs to be resolved. And that could be just as su- as quick as a follow-up to those. The people have have mowed their grass or they have, you know, done those things and it's no longer an issue in those. So, so, yeah, so the case is also the watering complaints are falling in there. So there's nobody watering anymore. But we needed to follow up on those things, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
That's it, Mister Oikie?
Nope.
Good, carry on. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, sorry, just for the bylaw projects that were completed last year. We were able to complete having the vehicle outfitted as a mobile office. So the officer is able to be mobile doing her work on the laptops and printing off from that. So hopefully, being able to make, be more efficient on the road with her time there. So, yeah. Twenty twenty-one initiatives that we're looking to go forward with. Like I said, the radio repeater relocation was successfully done yesterday. We this, we want to move forward with the second phase of the S P U, the sprinkler protection equipment purchases. As you remember, I kind of proposed a multi-year project just to minimize costs. So we want to go ahead and purchase the, any other portion of the equipment. The S P U trailer. So that's just simply going to be, we've already got authorization and approval from the S L R D. And they are going to, we've already received payment for the purchase of that trailer as well. So that's that. And the training development. So we're going to be coming with you to ask for money to further develop the airport training grounds. There are some grounds issues that we need to resolve and get on so we can get on the site and start doing practical trainings. Yeah, and we have, yeah, next slide. In the emergency management program section, we want to be coming with forward and asking to move to a level two support contract with the Canadian Red Cross. And what that will do is further support the local E S S volunteer, sorry, and getting them better training even more and actually bringing in Red Cross to be a partner into planning our emergency support services for us as well. So again, another relief of off of the locals, but bringing in extra as an international organization into the fold to have recruitment, to help out with recruitment and retention, planning as well as the response side of things. So what we're looking to is to jointly engage with the First Nations community and get them more involved with us as well in the E S S component side. Again, you just approved our application, the joint application with the S L R D for the Emergency Support Services, U B C M grant funding. So that will be up to fifty thousand dollars. And what we're going for is training components as well with a little bit of equipment for a group lodging scenario. So, yeah. Also completed in, sorry, backtrack, completed this year was E S E O C capacity building grant from U B C M. And we were able to purchase the remainder of our group lodging containers materials. So we have now are able to, we have enough equipment to group house and group lodge one hundred people at the rec center of SOB or other larger facilities. So that resource is sitting right here at Lilwet and can be deployed at any time, which is something that we didn't have three years ago. So that's really good. And the next will be the E O C capacity building, another E O C capacity, U B C M grant funding to further build our E O C on training and advanced planning and advanced information sessions in there. So, yeah. In twenty twenty-one for bylaw enforcement, we won't be coming with any requests for funding, but we will be working hard to complete the bylaw notice, notice and enforcement and education adjudication system. So that's our new ticketing bylaw and such. And we want to be, we're, we're going to be working on public education on the rollout of this and reviewing and updating policies and procedures in bylaw enforcement so we can expedite some of these things and get these issues off of the board here. So our goal is to be more efficient, close cases a lot faster. And, yeah, making it a happy community. So that's all that I have. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mister Oikie. Any questions from council? Councillor Leach, go ahead.
Hey, Darren. I just actually have a comment. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that data forward. I know that we've asked for a couple of years to have that, and it really helps us encompass what the the day-to-day workings of what bylaw does, and it really helps us for our future planning. So I appreciate that. I know that was a big ask and thank you for delivering.
Oh, thank you. And I want to be able to do that on a quarterly basis too, so you can see exactly what's happening, right? So.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from council? Thank you, Mister Oikie. We'll move on to the next presentation. Keep smiling, councillors, please. Oh, there he is.
Hi there. You're gonna have to give me one, one minute again while we go upload this beast. I don't know. My computer's not cooperating.
It's time for the dad joke, babe.
I have none. I don't know. Some people might think that I'm, I'm a bit of a joke as a dad, period, but. Oh, no, I got nothing. It is loading.
We will be patient.
Thank you. All right. What am I supposed to do here? And, all right, can you see the, is that on your screen there? You can see it, okay?
Yes, we can.
Title page? Okay, good. Thank you. All right. So what we're discussing now is the recreation department and our priorities and challenges for the upcoming year. So for sure, the coronavirus had a huge impact on, on the recreation department in, in twenty twenty. It was our revenues. The, the building was closed for four months. We're severely restricted in our ability to host programs and other activities, rentals for, for four months, even when we reopened in July, the amount of events and activities that we were able to host are, was quite limited compared to what we normally would do. But in spite of that pandemic or no pandemic, we did still host, fortunately, quite a, quite a wide variety of activities. And part of the reason for that is that we were really, once we reopened, we were the only, only space in the region that was, that had the capability to, to host a lot of the activities that people wanted to, to put on. So answering the question, what do we do? We host lots of things, meetings and events, programs, sports activities and fitness activities. And we are, we are actually a landlord of sorts. We are home, our building is home to the Lilwet Library, the Radio Lilwet, Lilwet Army Cadets and CBC Radios rebroadcasting equipment. So this slide will give you just a, an outline, not an exhaustive list, but an, an idea of, of the number of events that we were able to host in spite of the pandemic. Quite a, quite a number of events, we're, we're still held in the rec center, fortunately. The ones, one of the ones that I'd like you to pay attention to are the ones where I've kind of highlighted and there's a red mark on them where it's marked canceled. And that is, those are events that we were scheduled to hold, but unfortunately, the COVID, COVID restrictions meant we couldn't, couldn't host those events. I also wanted to highlight, and I've highlighted in blue on this list, cultural classes that were run in the building by Stathlum Outreach Health Services, the Community Adult Learning Center and the Lilwet Library. And I'll talk a little bit more of those in a few minutes. In twenty twenty, the budgets for Conway Park and, and the Kaish Creek Campground were moved from Public Works Department to the Recreation Department. In both these facilities, there are some pretty big challenges to be dealt with in the, in the coming years. In both of these, we'll be dealing with COVID restrictions for the foreseeable future, certainly for the first part of twenty twenty-one. And there are some pretty substantial upgrades needed to, to both of these facilities in the coming years, but not, not huge ones, hopefully, in, in twenty twenty, in the immediate future in twenty twenty-one. To answer the question of how we do what we do, it starts with, with our staff. There's a significantly reduced staff this year because of the restrictions on, on activities, but still four time, four full-time staff, three seasonal arena staff. We currently only have one program instructor where ordinarily we would have three or four or five. And we have three aid patrol staff, but those are basically high school students who work just a few hours a week. So the core staff are the, are the full-time, the seasonal and the program instructors are, a pro- programmer instructors similarly are only working a few hours a week, but very important for, for conducting programs, obviously. How do we do what we do? It's really, the relationship that we have with organizations in the community is, is, is really, really important. And, and we're really proud that we're able to host activities for the list of community organizations that you see in the, in the center column on this slide. And, and, and many more, but these are just, is just some of the organizations that we work with. The oftentimes, the organizations themselves are the ones that are actually doing most of the work to, to put events on and to do training and those sorts of things. But there, we're, we're very happy and proud that they've chosen the rec center to. and to do training and those sorts of things. But there, we're, we're very happy and proud that they've chosen the rec center to be the, the place that they, they do that work. And also importantly, we have really significant support, financial support from local businesses and, and organizations who purchase advertising in the arena and on our signs, and they donate money to sponsor events such as holiday skates, public swims when the, the pools open. This year, that, that wasn't the case. And also the, the community's fireworks display. So there was twelve thousand dollars in advertising this year, four thousand dollars in donations for public skates. There were no public swims because the pool wasn't open, and there was seven thousand dollars donated for the fireworks display, which was the most money I think that we've ever had donated for that. So it was a very, very heartening thing for, for Halloween this year. Next, we move on to highlights and accomplishments. And this is, this is, this is the one that I'm, this slide is the one that I'm happiest about. We, we were able to, with a lot of support from external organizations and, and the SLRD and other level of government, we were, we were able to to get some, some major improvements in, in the rec center this year, and it's things that are going to pay off for us for, for many years to come. The, the biggest one, I guess, in terms of dollars was the, the solar panel project. This was funded, it's, the, the project value was over a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and all one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars came from gas tax funding that we received through the SLRD, and it was through the auspices of the Area B Director Vivian Birch Jones that this, that we were able to acquire this funding, and I'm eternally grateful to her. The, the solar panels, we're, we're not, we know that we're saving money on electricity. I wish I could tell you exactly how much, but it's probably going to take a full year for us to really get a handle on how much money we're saving. But I can see from the monitoring that we're doing, we, we were able to monitor the energy production on a daily basis if we, if we so choose, and, and we are, there is a lot of power being generated by those panels, and I'm, I'm sure we're going to see a big impact on our, our, our bill by the end of the year. Right now, it's a little, it's a little difficult to tell how much money we're saving, but it's going to be significant. In the upper right corner there, there's, that's actually some, some guys on man lifts that were putting new LED lighting into the, the rink. We just actually just finished this up. There was a bit of a delay in this because of we had to reorder some, some lighting, but most of this was done in two thousand and twenty. This was a sixty-five thousand dollar project. It actually turned out to be about sixty-seven thousand dollars. Again, this is all entirely covered by gas tax funding through the SLRD. And this is going to be another project where the, the reduction in the hydro bills is going to be significant and something that will, will be an ongoing benefit to, to the taxpayers of Lilwet and, and the users of the rec center. Next, it was the, the project in the center was the, what, what you're seeing there is the new scoreboard. And there's actually beside it in the rink, there's a new LED screen that we use, that we use for messages and advertising. These were, these two pieces of equipment were worth in excess of thirty-three thousand dollars. And Lilwet Minor Hockey Association raised all, every, every nickel and dime that was needed to, to put those two pieces of equipment up or at least purchase them. And the installation of both of the scoreboard and the LED screen was, was done by staff and our mechanical contractor, Columbia Contracting, Dave Ralston. Thank you, Dave. And we saved a lot of money on, on installation as well. That would have cost us several thousand dollars, I'm sure, to, to, to do if we hadn't done it ourselves. I guess in the lower right corner, this is, this is going to sound a little bit silly perhaps, but one of the, one of the accomplishments or highlights for the year was actually just getting the building open again. I'm sure all of you had your own experiences with trying to deal with, with, with COVID and, and getting services in, up and running in, in, in various places in the community. For us, it was, it was a big, big undertaking to, we had to create a plan, a fifty-page, we had to create a fifty-page document, basically, with, with no existing template that dealt with every part of the building, every activity in the building, and, and try to explain how we were going to deal with, with COVID guidelines and COVID restrictions. So it took, it took, you know, several weeks to actually, of, of almost eight hours a day work to get this, to get this plan in place. So the, the result of it was when we did, when we were able to reopen in July, we were actually quite well-prepared. We, we have a lot of documentation that we were required to, to put in place, and we've done that. We just underwent a work safe inspection that was on the, the ammonia plant in, in the rink, but he also examined our COVID safety plan and was, was impressed with how robust the plan was and, and that our record-keeping was, was comprehensive. So it's been, it's been well worthwhile, but well worth the effort that we, that we put into it. In the lower left corner of the slide is cultural classes, and I said I would mention this a little bit earlier on. The, the name of the building is Recreation Education and Cultural Center. That's, that's what it was envisioned to be when it was built in nineteen eighty-six and eighty-five and eighty-six and opened in eighty-seven. I, I have to confess that, that I think we, as a department, have, have not always fulfilled that mandate in terms of the cultural aspect. This year, and it was partly because a lot of, some of the, the indigenous communities didn't want to host events and training within their own buildings. So when we were able to reopen, they, we actually, this, this started before the, the pandemic hit, but, but continued more afterwards. We were able to host classes in, we didn't, we hosted them, but they were, they were put on by the Stalium Outreach Health Services, the Community Adult Learning Center and the Lilwet Library. Those three organizations were involved in, in organizing these activities. And so they had classes in things like making, like drum making, basket making and rattle making, and there was a few other things. And we held about a dozen classes. We hosted about a dozen classes in, in two thousand and twenty. And we're certainly hoping to be able to host more classes in, in the, the coming year, and, and we are in discussions with the Lilwet Tribal Council about trying to create more activity in, in our, our facility of a cultural nature and, and perhaps dedicating space specifically to cultural activities in the rec center. So that's something that I'm, I'm hoping will come to pass in the near future. So the, the next thing I want to talk about is just the challenges that, that, the current challenges and upcoming challenges, and there's, there's lots. But first and foremost, I guess, is just trying to get when we're able to, to restart the programming that we actually had in place before the pandemic hit. So restarting programs like Zumba, Nia, youth sports, like lacrosse and soccer and T-ball. Hoping we can, can get some of that activity back, back in place sometime soon, but we're, we're at the mercy of Provincial Health Officer and Regulations. Also hoping to see a return of an art program that, that we had started earlier, not we started, there was a instructor Christina Timms that was doing some art classes with people, and that kind of got kiboshed by COVID as well. And, and the cultural program that I mentioned. So hopefully some, some new programming and restarting old programming is, is going to be something that we're focusing on. We've got lots of work to do. We've been very, very fortunate. As, you know, we talked about in the previous slide, the things that we've been able to do the last year or so to upgrade the facility, but there's still lots of work that needs to be done. In particular with HVAC system, the heating, ventilation and air conditioning system, and the pool and the hot tub mechanical systems. There's some upgrades that need to be done there, and there would be nice if we can upgrade other parts of the facility as well to modernize them and make them more comfortable and, and offer up to the amenities like the gymnasium in particular and meeting rooms. The Kaish Campground is now part of the Recreation Department, and we, a longtime contractor there has left, so we're looking for a new contract or a new arrangement to operate the campground this year. Hopefully some better ways to deal with some of the day-to-day challenges and funding down the road, funding for some much-needed upgrades to the site. The last one I've mentioned here is the swimming pool. So obviously restrictions from, with COVID meant that it was impractical to open the pool in two thousand and twenty. So unfortunately, for the first time in a long time, the pool did not open in, in that, in last year. As, as counselors are, are well aware, and everybody in the community should be well aware, by this point, Swims is very determined that in two thousand and twenty-one, we will, will have a pool season and hopefully opening in, in September of two thousand and twenty-one. Before the pool opens though, from, from our internal point of view, we have some mechanical issues we still have to deal with and some staffing issues that we'll have to overcome in terms of hiring lifeguards and so forth before that the pool can, can open. So those will be things that we'll have to, to have to deal with before the pool opens. Want to talk to you about some of the projects that we already have funding in place for in two thousand and twenty-one and some other ones that we're, we're looking, asking for funding for. So first and foremost is the new refrigeration plant for the arena. And this is something that is, is pretty exciting, and we're very fortunate that we were able to obtain funding, one hundred percent funding for this project, up to one point two million dollars from the federal and provincial governments, the ICIP grant. And that will give us a state-of-the-art refrigeration plant that using carbon dioxide as a refrigerant instead of ammonia. So we'll be removing ammonia from the building and the hazards that are associated with that. The project was tendered last year in the summer and was, in the fall, the contract was awarded to Simco Refrigeration out of Delta B C. This project is, the, the rink is still running right now that we, we had a the timing of the, the new plant coming in is very good because we had a, a major failure of one of our existing two compressors. One of them has failed just a few weeks ago. So we would have been looking at a fifty, I'm, I'm guessing about a fifty thousand dollar repair or replacement of one of our compressors had we not been in the situation that we're in with this new plant coming in. So I was fortunate that, that the timing of that was actually has worked out in our favor. The, the crews are scheduled to be here in, on April the twelfth to start removing the old plant and equipping the old plant and replacing new ones. So we're hoping by August thirty-first, the new plant will be in operation and we will be making, making ice for two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and twenty-one, we are hoping to complete a project for, we may not get the, the project completed. I'm hoping we'll certainly have the, the the tendering process and, and, and the contract award should, should be done in two thousand and twenty-one. Not certain about the, the timeline for construction yet. It'll depend on a lot of different factors, but we have, we're fortunate once again to receive gas tax funding from the SLRD through the good offices of Director Birch Jones once again. So we're, we're asked, we've, we were looking for computerized, computerized control system for our heating and our air conditioning systems. Now, the reason we need this is because as, as counselors have experienced, it's not always comfortable in, in this building because of the, the old equipment. In order to provide a heat and cooling in various times of the year, we have to literally manually open and close valves and run to different parts of the building to turn switches off and on in order to, to, to bring heat and/or cooling to different parts of the building. So it's a, it's a clumsy and inefficient and ineffective way to provide climate control in, in the building. We're hoping that this new computerized control system is going to be, answer some of our, our, our problems. They're certainly not going to, the HVAC system is, is the bottom line is, is that we, we really don't have enough heat in the total heat in the system to, to keep everybody warm all year round, but, or cool. But this is certainly going to make, make a big difference. It'll be a, a godsend for staff to not have to, to be constantly fighting with our, our old HVAC equipment. So we're hoping that's going to be a, something that'll move ahead in two thousand and twenty-one. We are looking to try to provide I'm calling this a ten-year facility upgrade plan, and what it, what it really is, is, is kind of a it's going to be a, a, a template or a guideline for, for for staff and for council going forward on, on things that need to get done to this, to this facility to, to bring it up to a, a more modern standard. Your recreation manager is planning to retire in two thousand and twenty-two. So I'd like to, before I, I depart, I'd like to actually leave behind a, a bit of a, a pathway to, to providing some of these upgrades in as much as I, as much as I am able to. I have to admit, this is something that I've, I've always been reluctant to in the past, but I have to admit the starting point for getting realistic cost estimates to, to get started on, on, on upgrades for, especially for the H, you know, re-upgrading the, doing proper upgrades to the HVAC equipment and to the pool and the hot tub mechanical equipment. We, we need, we need to hire an engineer to, an engineer firm to provide the information that we need to, to get realistic cost estimates. So that's what this, this, this project is all about, and I've provided a cost, what, what I, I'm estimating the cost will be for, for hiring those, those engineers. This is a, a smaller project, but this is identified as a council priority in our strategic planning sessions. Trying to create a plan for a year, year, year-round campground operation and it's, it's a, you know, possibly a, a very big, you know, trying, trying to create a plan for a year-round operation could, could be a really big involve really big improvements in terms of new structures and that kind of stuff. But I think that the starting point for, for trying to, to create a year-round operation of the campground is to just look at the basics that are there now and try to upgrade the systems that are there and, and get that, that figured out first before we look at any, any new structures or any new facilities down there. So we, there need to be, before we can, could, can possibly contemplate operating for twelve months down there, we will need to upgrade the, the water system to the, the campsites. We'll have to upgrade the electrical system for the sites as well. The septic field that's there is not adequate for anything beyond what we're doing already. In fact, it's probably not adequate for what we're doing there now. The washrooms and other buildings, we'll have to have a look at those and see what, whether they're suitable for, for a winter operation. What we're proposing to do here is to issue a request for quotations to try to get a, a handle on what the cost would be for, for that, those types of improvements. Next, so some of them, what the items within the rec center facility itself, we would, we're, we're asking for some new heaters in our change rooms in, in the arena. The ones that are there are very old, twenty years or more. And in very poor repair and, and they don't, some of them don't operate very well. So we're, we're looking to, to replace those now. Unfortunately, because of the, the electrical wiring for the existing heaters and the fact that we can't really alter it very much, the, the new heaters are actually quite expensive, far more. The, the three hundred and forty-seven volt heaters are far more expensive than the two hundred, like a two hundred and forty Uh the the three hundred and forty-seven volt heaters are far more expensive than the uh two hundred and like a two hundred and forty or a hundred and twenty volt heater. But we don't have um an opportunity to change the 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 wiring, so we're just gonna have to bite the bullet at some point and and uh um go with the the more expensive heaters for for those for that purpose. Um are it the edger that we're using to to um keep the edges of the arena ice surface uh smooth and to keep everything uh at the same level that the the one of the the hazards of arena maintenance is that that over time adding water, it tends to go to the edges of the 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 rink, and so we need to have equipment in order to to uh shave that down to to let make it match the rest of the the surface. Um and that's called uh an ice edger and the one that we have is about twenty years old, it's um it's propane-powered and it's 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 on its last legs, it it currently when we operate it. Um it routinely sets our carbon monoxide detector off when when it's in use, so we have to run the exhaust fans and make and try to make sure that we're doing it at a time when there's nobody in the building. Um it really needs to be uh reads, needs to be replaced um after many years of service. The new edger we'd like to purchase is an electric model, so we have, we'll have no concerns about emissions from from that piece of equipment. Um we're asking, we're looking for uh some money to upgrade the wifi for the meeting areas in the building so that renters when they're using the gym gymnasium or the mezzanine or room two oh one can actually um access wifi and have a strong enough signal so that they can use it for communications and presentations currently, the signal um because of the the block wall construction of the building. The the wifi signal in in many areas of the building is in the meeting rooms in particular is is so weak that it's 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 not very useful for for renters and so we're um we're asking for for some funding to uh upgrade that, so it'll be a more um serviceable um facility for 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 people that want to hold meetings and conferences. Um the next item here is um something that that we that needs to be addressed at the at the external part of the building. Um what you're looking at um in the picture on the right-hand side there, that the upper circle is actually the main power uh service that comes into the rec center, so that's a that's a six hundred volt service uh um three-phase service and it's and it's a it's potentially deadly to anybody who would be silly enough to 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 mess with it. We did have um uh an occasion where some un-clever vandal, unwary vandal, decided that it would be a good idea to climb up onto the existing fencing um for the comp, the the storage compound at the back of the building, grab on to that six hundred volt service and then hoist himself up onto the roof of the building and we saw evidence when uh we they they did a little bit of damage or or they damaged some some stuff when they were up on the roof, but we were able to to track their where they, how they got up there with from muddy footprints on the fencing. Um it's a it's a scary thing um to have people using that to to try to climb on, so what we'd like to do, there's also a lower circle of that on that picture is actually the gas shut-off, so uh for propane, we'd we'd actually like to just extend this this fencing for of this compound to enclose that whole area so that there's no public access to that uh especially to that electrical mast. Um and the last couple of things, um the poor old, this this was one we 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 looked at last year, but um didn't proceed with. The the poor old vacuum for the pool is is uh we call, it's called the Dolphin, it's a Dolphin brand thing and it and it's not, it doesn't work very well anymore, it's 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 in bad shape and and um we've had it repaired a couple of times at the place that we're at serviced in Vancouver and they basically told us that they don't make parts for that machine anymore, so we're um we're not sure if the if the existing vacuum is gonna would would make it through a through a whole season at this point. So we'd like to replace it with a new one and um I guess this is a follow-up to the the last one here is the is a follow-up to the repair that was that we did to the biomass. Um a much more expensive repair to the the bricks in the firebox that are um the bricks have to come from the factory in Austria. So that was inexpensive, it cost us eighteen thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two to have that repair done because of the the uh expense for for these these bricks to be shipped overseas. Um while they were doing that repair, they also noted that unfortunately the bricks on the door of the boiler, this this is a boiler that that there's one one end of it opens up so that you can actually get at the 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 firebox um internally and so there's a door that has to be opened and it obviously has its own insulating bricks and a liner that seals the that that door to the boiler. And those are also damaged and not uh and look like they they the the seal is gone in the door and and it's it's gonna cause us a big problem, so the the contractor recommended, highly recommended that we have this repair made in two thousand and twenty-one and not open that door uh unless absolutely necessary until until that repair was was completed. Um one thing I would like to mention, I didn't put it on a slide, but um we are also, um it's not directly a recreational project, but we were um charged with with looking after this and I just wanted council to be aware that this project is underway. Uh the Community Childcare Planning Program project, um we hired a contractor. All the funding for this has come to us through U B C M, uh approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. That project is underway and uh the contractor is at work with a committee of people in the community who are uh trying to get a needs assessment done to get more daycare spaces into the community, so that project is underway and hopefully will be finished up by the summer. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gare. Any question from councillor, just checking if councillor Reeb is online still? We have a question from
Yes, I'm still here, Mayor Bossy.
Thank you councillor, okay councillor, hopefully you have a question?
Yes, to the mayor, um one, I'm not sure who I'm asking this to, probably uh uh Mr. Deniger. Um with the broadband services that we anticipate, will that help improve the current reception for the wifi um in the meeting rooms in the gym?
Um the high-speed internet that's being brought into town by Shaw right now and potentially by Telus. It'll improve the speeds of whatever wifi wifi service we go with. But the actual wifi repeater devices that are in the rooms throughout the building, the ones right now are simply inadequate to even take advantage of that technology. So we have to work together, both us and the internet providers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any more questions from council for Mr. Gare? Thank you, Mr. Gare, excellent presentation, appreciate it. Next item. Mr. Card.
Hello, everyone. Uh so a grizzly bear walks into an ice cream parlor, oh no, there's, never mind, it's already up. Still want to hear the joke?
Yes.
So a grizzly bear walks into an ice cream parlor and he says to the guy behind the counter, he says, I'd like a scoop of chocolate and and the guy behind the counter says, hey, why the huge pause?
Hope your presentation's better.
You're batting clean up, Mr. Card.
Alrighty, so moving along. Uh so uh Kevin, uh Kevin's department might be the one that maybe you see the least. Uh but Public Works is is probably the one you see the most. Uh so the Public Works Department is made up of a a very uh a fairly well-rounded crew. Uh in two thousand and twenty, uh unfortunately, we only had a couple of summer students or sorry, two summer student labors and a an engineering tech student, uh we have a foreman, uh John LaRue. Uh but occasionally you'll see uh some senior uh members of the crew move into that role as sub-forman. And they do a very good job of that. So some staffing changes, uh you got a new uh public works director or public or director of public works and utilities uh which uh I started in May of two thousand and twenty. Uh and and I felt very welcomed here. Uh district staff is continuing to review uh employee qualifications and and experience to determine if staff is being allocated to the most efficient and uh or allocated in the most efficient and effective manner. Uh and also we're continuing to review staffing levels and workload to determine if additional personnel may be required, but again, we do have a very well-rounded staff um that can move into various roles when needed. So the Public Works Department is currently responsible for operating, maintaining and administering the following services. Uh public works and engineering, administration, hydrants, roads and sidewalks, drainage, snow removal and sanding. Uh also parks and trails, uh and as Bain mentioned uh uh for for Conway Park and the campground. Uh it's managed by uh recreation, but a lot of maintenance and and operations or sorry, maintenance uh is put in by Public Works. Uh we also have the airport, uh the museum and Miyazaki House, uh the cemetery and weather station maintenance, uh solid waste management, sanitary sewer and water utility, and I'll go through some of those in more detail. So public works and engineering services. Uh administrative services, uh departmental policies and procedures and uh much like some of the other managers, I've I've been uh had the pleasure of working with Kim G with some policy review. Um some other administrative services are are R F Ps, R F Qs, so requests for proposals and requests for a quotation, tenders and contract preparation. Uh master plans and other long-term planning, asset management, uh grants and capital project planning and management. So hydrant services, uh these services include painting and numbering, vegetation control and snow removal for access. All hydrants should be operated and tested once per year, so we do that as best practice. Uh and complete breakdown should take place on a seven-year rotational basis. Uh budget should be uh continued to be allotted for yearly installation of new hydrants to improve coverage. Uh unfortunately, last year in two thousand and twenty, we did not get a chance to uh replace some of the slide gate hydrants, uh so we're going to up our game for two thousand and twenty-one and get some of these hydrants replaced. So roads and sidewalks, uh there are more than a hundred lane kilometers of road and two kilometers of sidewalks in Lilwet. Uh services include patching, shoulder repair, litter pickup, uh including the the district's litter bins, which you'll see in a picture later on. Uh mowing and line painting, and you can see one of our dedicated public works staff uh doing some mowing with the flame mower there. Uh drainage services, so services include inspections, culvert cleaning and flushing, uh grate cleaning and storm manhole maintenance, and this has been aided by uh uh our vac truck, which I'll speak about uh a little bit later. So snow removal and sanding, so services include plowing and sanding district roads, sidewalks, parking lots, trails and fire lanes. Uh hauling sand to the public works yard, mixing the sand and salt, and budgeting is based on the average year. And cost overruns during years of high snowfalls are protected by stabilization stabilization reserves. So some other services that uh Public Works provides uh um is safety and training. Um the works yard, uh vehicles and equipment maintenance, trees and downtown landscaping. Uh winter uh sand, road sweeping and removal, so we put all that sand down, but it has to go somewhere. And you'll see our 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 sweeper out there shortly. Uh streetlights and signage is another big one and museum and Miyazaki House maintenance. So as mentioned before, in two thousand and twenty, uh Public Works began some policy review with the deputy corporate officer, Ms. G, which was which was good. Um several public work services required uh reviewed to ensure proper maintenance and and standards have been established but also maintained. Uh there is follow, sidewalks, uh snow removal, hydrant servicing, uh pavement management, uh maintenance agreements. Uh sorry, maintenance agreements were also reviewed with neighboring First Nations in Klieklet, uh mainly the water and sewer agreement in two thousand and twenty, which was which was very good. So as you can see, for health and environmental services, you can see one of our uh downtown receptacles there. Cemetery services, uh which include mowing and vegetation control, uh inspections, uh occasionally raising headstones, uh public liaison and grave digging and preparation. Uh garbage collection services, uh which include a portion of the district or a portion of the district's garbage collection requirement. Uh garbage is collected on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Part of the uh garbage collection is currently contracted out. Uh and staff are continuously trained to ensure proper safety guidelines being met throughout COVID challenges, as you can imagine. So as mentioned before, uh uh the recreation department is in charge of managing the campground, but Public Works certainly provides a lot of maintenance to our park trails and campgrounds. So services include things like irrigation, watering, uh mowing and vegetation control, uh washroom and fencing maintenance, uh BMX track maintenance, tree planting, maintenance and pruning, uh graffiti removal, dock repair and maintenance at the uh seat at Seaton Lake. Uh winterizing and deep-winterizing of washrooms and irrigation. Uh typically, a significant portion of this work is performed by summer students. Uh but as mentioned earlier, uh due to late grant approval in two thousand and twenty and availability of summer student workers, uh much of these duties were actually carried carried out by Public Works, uh which did take some time away from from other uh operations. Uh but uh Public Works did a really good job last summer of of maintaining the status quo. Uh so campground services, uh which are shared, um we have irrigation and maintenance and repair, uh spring ground maintenance, brush removal, uh bathroom maintenance, picnic table repairs. Uh administration of the campground was reassigned to uh Recreation Department in two thousand and twenty, but we are very much still involved in campground uh maintenance. Airport services. So services include hydro insurance and bank costs, lounge, building and and bathroom maintenance, fence inspections, uh mowing, uh fuel receiving and fuel dips, as you might have heard that term. Uh the issuing of NOTAMs, which is a a notice to airmen if there's any maintenance on the runway or or the runway needs to close. And also runway surface inspections. So we have water services. Um and our water infrastructure, so the works crew is responsible for the operation and maintenance of of uh uh all of the water infrastructure, so the water treatment plant and intake structure. Uh five pressure-reducing stations or P R Vs. Two water pump booster stations plus several small pump stations in small water system. Four reservoirs, a hundred and thirty-six fire hydrants and thirty-two kilometers of water mains. Um individual water services and assorted occurrences, so all the little stuff, the main valves and the CCs and down the line. So as I mentioned before, we have a very uh fairly well-rounded crew, uh so training at uh at the water treatment plant continues to be a high priority for the district. Uh we do have a a lot of crew that can can step into other roles, which is very good uh in terms of emergency situations and things like that. So the E O C P actually obligates the district to certify their operators, as you may already know, our plant is certified as a level two for water treatment and water distribution, so a succession plan is ongoing to address uh the continuing training requirements. Um training budget encompasses E O C P training and certification courses, so getting those C U's that are so uh integral to to getting your qualification. Uh small systems training uh and travel, meals and accommodation makes up some of that budget. So flushing, uh reservoir and intake services, so uh we flush the water mains two times per year as per best best practice. Uh we have reservoir maintenance as well. Uh cleaning of the intake, which typically happens six times per year as or as required now because of the ingress of sand from the Seton River. And uh flushing continues to be done in-house and we've been very successful with our flushing program last year. So water treatment services. So Public Works uh is involved in daily inspections, testing, regulatory data So Public Works is involved in daily inspections, testing, regulatory data submissions and reporting, which is, which is daily and very important. Historical records and current document management. They're responsible for emergency callouts and alarms, which do happen. General operations and maintenance, and all staff have been involved in the operations and maintenance of the water treatment plant, which helps to ensure the competence through cross-training and also helps with emergency preparedness. So there are significant costs, the significant costs for the water treatment plant continue to be hydro power and chemicals. So after it's treated at the plant, it has to go somewhere. So water distribution and pumping services include inspections, chlorine residual testing, leak detection and repair, locates, line locates, cleaning and flushing, maintenance and repairs, emergency callouts and also installations. Some other responsibilities are monthly and annual reporting, liaising with interior health and provincial and federal ministries or regulatory bodies, licensing agreements, water quality advisories, public notifications and outages, also even just responding to inquiries or investigating complaints. Sewer services, so the end of the line from, from the water treatment plant essentially. So we have the sewage treatment plant, primary filtration and clarifiers, sludge de-watering. We have three lift stations, 204 manholes, 24 kilometers of sewer mains and sewer services and assorted appurtenances. So this is just more of what we do. So sewer flushing, collection and pumping services, and you'll notice the, the VAC truck, which is right at home. Looking sharp there with guaranteed rugged on the side. And with sewer flushing, collection and pumping services, we have cleaning manholes, flushing sewer mains, cleaning and flushing pump stations, inspections, locates, maintenance and repairs, again, emergency callouts. And this VAC truck has been so integral in, in, in making 2020, giving us a margin of safety and self-sufficiency when it comes to sewer flushing, which typically we would contract out. So at the sewer treatment plant, there's daily inspections, testing. We also handle emergency callouts and alarms, general operations and maintenance. Just like the water treatment plant, some significant costs are power. The district ended its contract with Corix previously and which, who fulfilled the regulatory requirement for a level two oversight at the plant. But as I'll mention later in our highlights, we, we had to make some changes there. So other services include, included in the sewer function are monthly and annual regulatory reporting. We have to get the, the right biological oxygen demand and total suspended solid numbers to a place where regulatory where regulatory likes it. So and we also have safety O and M training and EOCP training as well involved in that. So 2021 project requests, so you won't see a major change in service request levels, but I do have some, or Public Works does have some, some project requests for 2021. So the facility needs assessment at the Seaton Water Treatment Plant. Much like the needs assessment we, we've completed at the wastewater treatment plant. We feel that the same needs to happen at the Seaton Water Treatment Plant to see where the shortcomings are with, in terms of regulatory, in terms of efficiency and in terms of safety. So that is a project that we would like to undertake. And also a condition assessment as well. So the Seaton Plant Filtration Needs Assessment, and this is as a complement to the needs assessment for the, the overall of the plant. So this is specifically looking at the microfiltration or the modules. So the, the PALL system modules have been in constant use since September 2015, putting them past the five-year mark. So we essentially need to do an autopsy on one of the modules to see where we are as far as the remaining working life of our filtration system and then budget accordingly. Supplementary sources feasibility study, so this is a topic that's come up a lot since I've been here. And basically, we've looked at the 14th Avenue, began to look at 14th Avenue Spring Assessment, but we also want to look at Dicky Creek and Town Creek. So we'd like to look at what it's going to take to get these gravity-fed systems in a ready-to-run state in order to supplement the plant during peak, peak, peak times. So wastewater treatment plant, so back to, back to the wastewater treatment plant, we need some component upgrades. As I mentioned earlier, we had a needs assessment in 2020, which outlined some of the, the regulatory needs, safety needs and efficiency needs. So based on their first year projections from that needs assessment, we have about 10 items there that we would like to get done. Some are simply a pre-designed stage to be completed at a later date. But predesign still, still very much necessary. Municipal Hall renovations, so this is mainly interior and exterior painting. As some of you may have seen, the municipal hall is in need of some, some fresh paint perhaps to help create that safe and welcoming environment for staff and the public. So we are asking that a budget request to, to do these renovations and make the municipal hall look, look how it should. So the Reservoir Maintenance Utility Crawler, so this is actually an ROV that we're asking for. We have, as, as mentioned in the presentation, we have some very large reservoirs that are integral to the water system and, and maybe in the future. So typically, we would have a contractor come in and do a full investigation and assessment and provide information on, on maintenance needs. However, we feel we can do this in-house with the aid of the ROV so that we can do our own inspections. And this is not just for reservoirs, this, this could also be for, for intakes or anywhere where you wouldn't want an operator to actually climb in, so confined spaces and things like that. So airport business feasibility study. As, as we discussed before, the airport is in need of some, some TLC, but we want to make sure that it's, it's still going to generate some revenues so that we can get that, that money back in some way. So we would like to undertake a business feasibility study focusing on some of the major upgrades like crack ceiling, airport hangar and storage, possible runway extension and lighting, which are all very costly features. But we need to, we need to look and through the feasibility study and see if this is, is actually going to be a good move for the district. So roadworks, so we would like to continue the pavement management plan from 2016 and tackle some of the rougher spots in town, so to speak, where, where some road maintenance and repaving are needed. And again, that's just a continuation of the 2016 Road Management Plan. So some concerns and challenges. Staffing and regulatory requirements, as, as you know, we, we do have fairly heavy requirements from provincial, federal governments. There's the issue of EOCP certification for the wastewater treatment plant. Currently, we do not have, excuse me, an operator with the level two requirement for, for proper in-house oversight. Grant approval has, has offered, has, has brought up some challenges for sure. Things like the 7th Avenue Drainage and PRV Project, delays in the airport fuel tank replacement approvals, and, and even with summer students and delays in approval. So the hydrant maintenance policy is another one that we, that I'm hoping to look at and review to ensure that we're being compliant and if changes are warranted. Another challenge that, that council has seen firsthand is, is shared infrastructure with government bodies like MOTI. The Water and Sewer Master Plan, do you need to be reviewed? However, there are some trigger points that we're waiting for in terms of other development before we can fully review the plan. The wastewater treatment plant needs assessment was completed in 2020, which did reveal some necessary updates, but also some possible funding gaps. So some water service concerns, so some progress has been made on developing and implementing a cross-connection control program with one of our crew actually attaining the backflow testing certification last year, which is a big, a big win for the district. But we have not fully implemented, implemented the cross-connection control program. Water metering program, we had misuse with software and export files, which were updated in 2020. Meter reads are complete, but work is still ongoing before we can fully implement a volume-based billing. And, and we'll be working through that this year. So the water treatment plant or PALL system will require an inspection, as mentioned earlier, to determine the remaining working life of the filter modules. And a needs assessment will be required to determine any shortcomings of plant operation. And then a good example of, of what's on the list that we've already developed is backup power. So some additional projects in 2021, increased safety on Main Street, so crosswalk safety assessments. And we're, and we're currently working on that and will be presenting to council any breakthroughs with that. We'll also be carrying forward the potability of East Lilwet Wells Industrial Park and trying to figure out a way to remove the arsenic. We'll also be carrying forward the meter program, as mentioned earlier. We'll be looking at the street lighting, the adequacy assessment. And also, as mentioned before, we're waiting grant funding for the 7th Avenue Drainage and PRV upgrades, asset management program and the Russell Street Water and Sewer Upgrades. Some highlights of 2020. So the wastewater treatment plant facility needs assessment was a huge success and, and myself and the crew learned a lot about what it's going to take to get that plant operating better. The wastewater treatment plant bypass all the authorization and aeration system maintenance, this was a really big one. Staff was able to, and actually with, with the aid of the VAC truck, which is integral in the, in the process, were able to replace the aeration socks and do a full maintenance on the aeration system, which is actually equated to some, some hydro savings there and is also equated to better TSS and BOD numbers. So again, exactly what regulatory wants us to do. We've also seen staff promotions. We've seen grant approved for phase one of the fuel tank replacement project, which is still underway and set to be completed at the end of March. We had QP negotiations, we had the, the VAC truck purchase, power tailgate purchase and installation. We've also seen the safe bulk water provisioning for the community with the standpipe installed down at the campground. We obtained the required level two oversight at our water treatment plant for, that's for water treatment and distribution. We had a crew member who actually achieved that level two, which again is a really big win for the district and creates self-sufficiency. So we've also seen a successful review of utilities bylaw and policies, coordination with SLRD and kickoff of the, the development of our district bio solids management plan. As many of you know, the current, the, the current system is not necessarily sustainable. So we've been moving in the right direction to make sure that we have a bio solids management plan to bring us into the future. We've also seen some, some great success with timely completion of leak repairs and sewer backups. And I can't say enough about how well the crew responds to leaks and how methodical they are with, with making sure that it's repaired in a timely manner. We've also seen installation of campground security measures and maybe most importantly, we survived COVID for 2020, so kudos to all crew for surviving a tough year. COVID, new management, and this is all on top of the day-to-day challenges of, of living in a guaranteed rugged environment. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Card. Any questions? Counselor Hopfield?
Yeah, that was a really, really good question. Sounds weird now, so okay, I'll just make this quick. When you said that roads would be done, are, are you going to give a list of particular roads? Because I know that I have a few residents that asked me about their road and when it will be upgraded or, you know, maintained or whatever, will you provide that list?
Yes, through, through the mayor, yes. So the pavement management plan is actually posted, it is, it is public. But when we, it's going to come down to timing, cost, and what's going to be the biggest benefit for the district based on timing. So we can absolutely, and I absolutely do take any complaints into consideration when it comes to road paving, also past claims and things like that. So that will all have an influence on, on which roads will be selected for, for maintenance.
Is it not so though? You're working on an asset management plan for all our assets district-wide and it'll all be, you'll allocate that in terms of priority and a complete listing that all of us can see and view, is that not correct?
Yes, in the meantime, before we have the asset management program up and running to, to identify the working life of, of assets, we're, we're still going to use the, the 2016 pavement management plan because it does, it does reveal or it does illustrate really well what roads require the most maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Card. So we have a lot of good information here, I think some really good reports and, and outlines and, and plans going forward. And we have a number of meetings to go through before staff requires us to, to pass this into a bylaw, is that not correct, Mr. Taylor?
I'm actually going to pass it over to the CFO to explain the rest of the process.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, the CAO should take over because he's designated himself as the CFO, didn't he?
That would be a disaster.
Okay. But there's a lot of, a lot of material here, a lot to digest and very good ones. And I'm sure that you'll be looking for us to, to have input or question more or clarification more. But I thought these were very good presentations and we have a few meetings before you're going to ask us to, to pass this in the form of a bylaw, is that not correct, Ms. LaRue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I, I will answer that kind of at the end of this last presentation. But yes, there are still a couple more meetings to go before we would request that council adopt this as a financial plan bylaw. Again, if there was anything that came out of tonight, we aren't asking for any decisions tonight. But if there's anything that came up that council just has absolutely no appetite for whatsoever, this would be a really fantastic night to let us know that so that we can, you know, kind of fit that in and, and juggle things around and. and juggle things around and see how the rest of everything would work. But, but yes, there is still a little bit of time before council would need to adopt the bylaw.
Okay, any comments or interest queries from council? I have one. I'll run that. If I'm looking at project and the one that interests me most obviously is the downtown plan and implementation. I see we're not looking at 2022 to begin that. Is there any possibility we can move that up?
Sir, you said that it was in 2022 or it wasn't?
It was, I see it starting in 2022.
Yeah, so the downtown plan is going to be an implementation of the OCP. And I would strongly advise that we not only have the OCP finished, but zoning also in place before we look at getting into the downtown plan. Is that is going to be a fairly, fairly involved project with quite a bit of public consultation. And I'm just concerned that if we attempt to do zoning, public consultation and downtown plan consultation at the same time, we're going to end up with consultation burnout and not really get what we're looking for. Also, if we're looking to do the downtown plan earlier, it was my intention to run that process. And I'm not going to be able to, quite frankly, get the zoning bylaw and the downtown plan done at the same time and also stay on top of the core functions of the public works of the Development Services Department, which is processing applications as there is no other planner on staff. So if we were to move it forward, then I would need a not insignificant amount of money to take that to RFP and get some consultants to run that process for us.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. That's the kind of information I wanted coming forward. A lot of our strategic plans and desires and requirements are years out that we won't experience unless we're able to manage our resources or enhance our resources. I just want to make that point, thank you. Anything else from counselors? Counselor Howe?
Thank you. I do have more of a question regarding the community development. Littlewood Memorial Garden Improvement Project. And I know that this has been a, it's been a project in process for quite some time with some challenges along the way. So I know the funding total from the districts, from the district would be just the 1,700. Yeah, 1,700. However, I'm curious because having listened to Mr. Card's presentation from Public Works and knowing that this would be yet another project that they'd have to take on, are we, are we aware of how much time it would actually take? So we have a realistic timeline to work with in terms of maintenance and upkeep for every month of the year? I know in the summertime, we have, we have summer students, which is fantastic. But sometimes they start to leave before the summer term is complete in preparation for whatever fall activities they have planned. So I just want to make sure that if we take this on, and I really hope we can, that we fully understand what it will require and that Public Works would be able to, would be able to take this on.
Yes, if I may, Joanie can, sorry, Ms. LaRue can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe the capital costs for this project are actually 100% grant funded. I believe originally when this came to council a year or two ago, there was an expectation that the district would actually contribute towards that. But we've managed to collect about eight different grants to actually fund all the upfront costs. So the only lingering ongoing costs are the operating costs for the maintenance that you're talking about. That budget, I believe $3,200 a year, was based on consultation with the, both the local experts and the society out of Vancouver that's designing the park. And that was one of the first discussions we had with them is we don't want to revitalize the park only to have the same thing repeat itself that happened last time where there was no forethought as to maintaining it. And so they did work with us locally to find out what a reasonable cost would be or a realistic cost would be to do that maintenance, leaning on contractors and so forth. What that balance might be between contractors, summer students or regular staff is going to depend on the reality of what garden is created. But they have that in mind, they know what that expectation is, that it needs to be a very low maintenance garden. That's why a lot of it is trying to use the rocks and the sand and the gravel, which hearkens back to the actual Japanese garden style where instead of just trying to cover everything with plants and somehow make it look like a garden, is to just do very specific plantings that use low water and low maintenance. And there may be other members in this call right now that can also provide more information on that.
Okay, Counselor Hopple's next, after that is Counsel Leach.
Is this something that can be looked after in future years by a society? Is there a society that could be formed and with the overall expectation that they would maintain it?
If I may, yes, that's certainly a possibility. From what I've heard dealing with volunteers in this community is that there is volunteer burnout right now. And there's some very fundamental structural and governance issues that need to be worked out in a number of societies in this community first, so that they can actually sustain themselves and that volunteers can be focused on the work that they're passionate about rather than accounting and governance and all those other things that are very draining on people. So we are working with these societies to try to strengthen them, but that can take years. So the district has the funding in mind here right now to do the maintenance as needed. And we would certainly look at having volunteers help out. But I don't think it would be viable to actually just drop this on volunteers right now. I think we'll end up in the same situation we're already in.
And if I can say too, it would obviously end up becoming part of our heritage policy when staff gets around to doing that in the future, too. Counselor Leach?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Mr. Denegar if, because I've seen the actual drawings and I know he has as well, is if it's a possibility to ask the group that's working on this if we could publicly share the drawings? So not only council, but the public will see exactly what they would like to do because it's a lot of rock and it's a lot and it's, they've got the measurements down for the, like underneath it. So weeds aren't growing through, like it's highly calculated on what they, what they're wanting to do. So the maintenance, although in the past has, was very expensive, I don't foresee if the plan is stuck to there being much of a maintenance cost.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea and we could share those renderings. Now, they are planning on coming out here as soon as the weather stabilizes because they're very eager to get started. They may do it in phases, but last I heard, they're hoping to get it done by very early summer. So it's going to be fast and furious. But it is going to take a first visit where they look at the actual rocks they're going to use and the materials and really plan out the site for watering. Because it is conceptual at this time, it's an educated conceptual drawing, but they're going to need to refine it. And once that's done, I think that rendering should be shared on our website.
Okay, any more questions from council? Ms. LaRue or Mr. Denegar, anything else going forward here?
I think it's just the final part of the presentation where we dig a bit more into the numbers. So over to Ms. LaRue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So again, just, I'm going to try and make this really quick. I know everybody's tired and overwhelmed with information tonight, but I just want to give you an overview of all of the project and service level requests and let you know how our reserve funds are looking. Start with the projects that were completed last year. You'll see here all of the projects that were part of the 2020 budget and were completed within the year. The most significant, not necessarily the most important, I'm saying the most financially significant. The repairs to the back apron at the fire hall came in just about $12,000 under the $108,000 budget. The GIS aerial photography project came in just under $900 under the $66,000 budget. And the purchases of both the hydro vac jetter truck and the administration vehicle that you see all deckled out at the district office now. The total together for those vehicles were $95,000 of the $120,000 budget for both of those. Less significantly, but again, as Bain mentioned as well, needs mentioning here as well was the scoreboard at the rec center. It costs just a little bit less than anticipated and it was entirely funded through the generous donations that were raised by the minor hockey. As always, there's a number of projects that were started last year, but they weren't able to be completed. The remaining budget for these projects will be carried forward into the 2021 budget so they can be finished. I want to note that included in this list are the wildfire prevention project, the SWPI project, which is actually now complete. There was just some invoices that hadn't come in yet by the end of the year, so we have to budget for those. The airport fuel tank replacement, as Mr. Card mentioned, is scheduled to be done by the end of this month. The LED lighting upgrades, I believe Mr. Gare said that they are now complete or just about complete. And I just got word yesterday that the repeater replacement and relocation was completed as of yesterday. So a number of these projects that are carry forward projects are actually complete now. We just have to carry the budget forward because we will have some expenses in this year. There's a number of projects, as you've heard tonight, that we're waiting for funding announcements, grant requests. If we're successful in the request, the projects would go ahead. But if the grants are denied, the projects would come back to council for your consideration again, as they'd require additional funding from the district. We have now received, as we were just talking about, the Memorial Garden improvements. We've received all of that funding or not necessarily received all of the funding, but been approved for all of that funding, as well as the Community Childcare Planning Grant. We've been approved for the funding on that as well. The rest of these projects, as mentioned earlier tonight, we're still waiting for announcements on whether we were successful in the funding. As Jeremy mentioned at the beginning, service level increase requests are for projects that would be ongoing. They'd have an ongoing effect on the operational budget for the district, meaning that the funding required would have to be raised by the district in the future, either through taxation or utility charges or by sourcing it out to fund some external funding. Detailed information on all of these requests, if you didn't hear enough tonight, is in the handout that I emailed all of you previously. The handout is also available on our website. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. You should note that council has already adopted an operating budget. That budget outlines the property taxes and utility fees that we calculate to receive this year, the 1.1%. Typically, service level increase requests such as these would normally be funded in the current year through increased taxes or utility fees. However, to avoid that, we're recommending that they be funded through either accumulated surplus as well as the district's COVID relief funding that we received back in November. Should council wish to move forward with these requests, but wish to increase property taxes to fund them instead, property taxes would need to increase an additional three and a half percent over the 1.1% that's already included. Accounting for the ongoing costs in the future, so 2022 forward. If all of these projects were to go ahead, we'd be looking at approximately a 3.4% increase in property taxes for 2022. The new project requests, I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. You've already heard a lot of information about them. I want to mention though, in this presentation, I have the airport feasibility study as being funded through appropriated surplus. As you heard tonight, we are actually awaiting or hoping for grant funding to help offset that cost. So the district's portion would actually only be $10,000 through appropriated surplus. All of the detailed request forms, again, for all of these new projects you'll find in the handout that I mentioned that I emailed out, again, is available on our website for the public to view. Here you'll see the total cost of the one time project requests for 2021 is just under $1 million. This is just the new project requests. This is significantly less than the requests in previously years. We were $1.7 million last year and actually $6.3 million the year before in 2019. In all of our discussions amongst staff while preparing these requests and prioritizing staff's recommendations for requests, it's very apparent to staff particularly that the lack of bodies and the increasing workload that we're experiencing, as well as all of our other employees are experiencing, means that the project requests need to be scaled back to an actual achievable level so that we don't have all of these projects that council has approved to go forward that we actually don't have the capacity to move ahead with. Just to touch briefly on our funding balances and then I'll wrap this up, everybody can go to bed. As you're aware, we received the $880,000 of COVID relief funding. $208,000, just over $208,000 of this funding is being used already as part of the adopted operating budget. And as mentioned, we're recommending that an additional $71,000 be used to fund some of the service level increase requests should council choose to go ahead with them. All of those requests, should they be approved by council, this would leave just over $600,000 available to use of the COVID recovery grant in future years. Again, they are expecting, they don't have a set timeline on when we have to use this money by, but they are expecting that we use it within the next two to three years. We are recommending that about $26,000 of our accumulated surplus funding be used for projects in 2021. This would leave a balance of just under $1.7 million for future use. And we're recommending about $207,000 in appropriated surplus funding be used for projects this year, reducing the balance of those funds to just under $706,000 that we can use in future years. Appropriated surplus is, it's money that's been set aside for specific uses. So it's not a legislated reserve fund that's outlined in the community charter, but we do have to use it for what it was intended for. So that's why it's separated out from the general accumulated surplus that I mentioned before. And finally, we're recommending that $903,000 of our reserve funds be used this year for projects. This would leave a balance of $5.8 million available to use in future years. In total, should council choose to go ahead with all of the projects and service level increases outlined tonight, we would use about $1.2 million of our own funds and leave approximately $8.7 million available to use in future years. Oh, sorry, so what's next? As we mentioned, we're anticipating having another meeting next week, hopefully. Excuse me, another committee, the whole meeting, where we're looking for council to give us clear direction on where we're looking for council to give us clear direction on what you want included in the budget. Following that, even if it takes a couple of meetings for that, following that, we'll prepare a new financial plan bylaw which includes all of the projects and service level increases as directed. Once that bylaw is adopted, we can bring forward the tax rate bylaw for adoption. And all of this has to be done no later than May 14th. But as we've mentioned earlier, the sooner we get a financial plan adopted, the sooner some of these projects can move forward. And that's it. So again, I just want to mention, sorry, I see Counselor Hopple with a question. I just want to mention tonight is the night, if there's something you have absolutely no appetite for, let us know. And on the other hand, if there's something you were expecting to see in here that you don't, this would be a great time to let us know that as well.
So through the mayor. Can I just ask you, Ms. LaRue? So I understand, so what you're saying is that, you know, we have put a lot of projects on the table for you guys and obviously we don't want you to have a burnout. So in saying that for 2022, if all these projects were to go ahead, we would have to raise the taxes by 3.3% for 2022. Would that equal about, just in a dollar form, monetary form, would that equal about, what, $80,000? Something like that?
Through the mayor, so in 2022, a 1% tax increase would be about $21,000. So that, that 3.4%, I believe I said, tax increase, that was when I was talking about the service level increase requests. So those are the ones that actually impact our operating budget moving forward. If all of those projects were to be approved by council and go ahead, then we'd be looking at that 3.4% increase in taxes next year.
Okay, I was just trying to get a monetary value so we can kind of look at that throughout this year and kind of keep that in the back of our head. I also had another question. There was a loan taken 25 years ago for the rec center upgrades. And I believe that was one of the last loans that was to be paid off. And I think it was 2021. Is that, is that paid off now or close to it, obviously?
Through the mayor, we have $44,011 remaining on the principal balance of that loan and it'll be paid off this year.
And that's our last outstanding loan, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Ms. LaRue. Good to see you, Counselor Weeb. Any further questions by council? No. Yes, Counselor Hopple.
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, I think that, I want to thank all you guys for doing such a great job, all the departments and senior staff because I really think it's important that people in our community and our taxpayers know what staff are doing. And often, we don't, like I don't, you know, and this is really informative. So I'm hoping that people will tune in over the next month to hear this because it's very impressive. You guys are a well-oiled team, dream team machine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Yes, I concur, and I'm sure the rest of council agrees. Very well presented and lots of good information and good knowledge there. And I think that the community has to understand that we've got some progressive or aggressive plans for our community and we just have to balance the needs, requirements and the resources going forward. They are not hearing anything. There's no notice of motion. We'll go to the Rising Report. I need somebody to move that the March 11th, 2021 Committee, the whole meeting, Rising Report. Who will move? Counselor Weeb, second, Counselor Leach. Call the question. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council. Much appreciated. Have a good night.